Looks like a child.
He was shaving.
Is that your daughter?
Yes.
I'm sorry, could you come for her?
No.
Are you guys kidding me?
Well, we got the money.
I had the one eight three and I was in Florida and then I had a client.
Money?
Go money.
No, 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 money, man.
What'd you say?
Stuck in house.
Oh, that's a shooting.
What made you nervous?
I think.
Sorry, Mayor.
No. Hey. It's recreation.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's six oh one. No, it's six o'clock, so we're ready to start and we'd like to certainly welcome everyone to the Gastonia City Council meeting of December the second. At this time, I would like to, if I could please, to ask Councilman Todd Pierceall to lead his prayer or to have the prayer and then we will have, if you'd please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Before he does, let me say that I, as the speaker for the council, just a few weeks ago, we presented a proclamation to Senator David Hall and in the other meeting and for all of his years of service of representing us in this area. And of course, as you, most of you know, he had a stroke Monday week ago and I don't know if he's home yet or not, but he is doing somewhat better. He's got a way, a long ways to go and so let's keep him in our thoughts and prayers. And if you, please go ahead, Mr. Pierceall.
Thank you. If you'll bow your heads. Father, we come to you tonight asking for your guidance as this council seeks to do the will of the city. We ask that you place your hand upon us so that we can make the right decisions for these people. We ask that you watch over the citizens of Gastonia and to be with them at this time of year when some without feel hopeless. We ask that you give them hope. We ask that you guide the rest of the community to embrace them, lift them up and provide that hope for them. We ask that you be with the whole family. Mr. Hall, great leader in our community, we ask that you comfort his family as he recovers and also be with all the other families that are hurting or have sickness or have had a loss to loved one. We ask that you be with our troops overseas during this holiday time, comfort their families with their absence. We ask that you place your protective hand on of our first responders, police, fire, medic, as they seek to keep us safe here in Gastonia. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May I please have, under item C, adoption of the agenda and a motion, please?
Summon.
May, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I make a request to change the order of items only because I see there are some folks in the audience who are probably here for the RAC report, which is item number nine, and it's going to be a quick report and I'd hate to see them have to wait most of the evening to get to that. So if it's okay with you all, if we could put that prior to item seven, first on the regular agenda?
Yeah, second. Okay. There is a motion in the second discussion. All in favor?
Okay.
I appreciate that.
It will slide in under the regular agenda.
Jenny, if you need that for the record, just that change, put in my motion. Thank you.
Is there a motion now to adopt the agenda?
Motion here, sir.
All right, just your second.
Second.
All right, discussion. All in favor? All right, adoption of the agenda. Now, item D is public expression. Each person is limited to a total of five minutes speaking time. The one name that I have here under public expression is Dr. John Garrett, 2985 Robinwood Road. Dr. Garrett?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Hello.
As a council, thank you for this time. I just want to announce that last Friday Gaston County lost a member of the Greatest Generation. Mr. Bill Morris passed away at that time. His funeral was today. He was a World War II veteran, served with 36th Infantry Division, National Guard, even out Texas. It was finalized and saw a pretty heavy service, especially going up through the Poe Valley and elsewhere in Evans. Mr. Morris later served as a Marine and then moved to Gaston County some years ago after he retired from his current work. Lately, he's lived at more inside matters than he does qualify as a citizen of Gastonia. He worked 17 years, he's a volunteer at Gaston Memorial Hospital. He was a member of the Gastonia Rotary Club. He shared the table with our two chiefs and the mayor and myself. I just thought his passing should be acknowledged by the city council.
Thank you very much and I certainly echo what you said. He's got quite a, there's an article in the paper about him today, but it's quite an interesting article about his life and he's everything that was described and more, so...
His father was W.C. Fields.
That's exactly, my little chicken, Dean.
Yeah, that's right.
Right, so, you know, he first told me that, I didn't believe him. But you look at him and you could certainly believe him. He's a wonderful, wonderful man. Also, Dr. Garrett, I'm going to take a second and tell you that as a, as a second only to that is someone that I've known for, since he's been here, is, which was back in the seventies, Ed, it was, his father-in-law was a city councilman down in Wilson or somewhere down the east and he flew his own plane and brought him up here. His doctor Seva passed away and he, he was our first neurosurgeon in Gaston County and a wonderful, wonderful guy, so that just happened certainly today. But Bill Morris, I think that we, we gave him a hard time about 97 years old, but he was not the oldest in the Rotary Club. M.O. Owens is older, so maybe there's hope for all of us, I don't know. Well, I hope.
What's M.O.? Hundred and one?
Hundred and one. Yes, sir.
Still driving his car.
Little doll. Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Shoots below his age.
Well, that's right. Shoots below his age. But Bill Morris was a real asset, as John said, to Gastonia. Okay, the consent agenda, you've got before you items one through six. Any comments or questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's changed to item five, the financial reports for October. Exhibit five fifteen.
Mm-hmm.
I just have a question. In looking at that, we are thirty-three point three percent of the, into our new budget, right, Melanie?
Yes.
Okay. The mayor and council, year-to-date percent spent is forty-three point eight. I'm sure there's a real good reason for that. If you could help me understand that.
The biggest line item year relative is your dues and subscriptions line item. Most of those are due in July in their annual, so most, most of that line item is spent the very first month of the fiscal year.
Okay. The only other one is administrative services, that's forty-nine point fifty-three percent.
And that includes your human resources department and again, there's lots of insurance, workers' comp and things like that. That's an annual expenditure at the first of the year.
Okay, that's fine. That's, that's the only question I have.
Okay, any other questions?
Next to you, for you.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, please. Thank you very much. Now, that was the consent agenda. Okay, all right, item nine versus seven, okay? Or, well, seven's next. Go ahead, Dr. Curly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, let me say it's Recreation Advisory Commission report. Dr. Curly?
Yes. The Recreation Advisor, Advisory Commission met on Tuesday, November eleventh and we have the three items to, to discuss briefly here. The first item of which was a presentation on the shooting park and we had a great presentation by Mr. Steve Duncan and Brenda Craig also attended that commission meeting at that time and you all are very familiar with the project and Mr. Duncan has given a full presentation to council before, so I won't go through any more of this detail. But there are some folks in the audience and the reason why I wanted to move this up was to at least recognize them. Obviously, I believe they're here for support, so anyone who's interested or involved with shooting sports in Gaston County, I think Gaston Christian and maybe East Gaston High School are here, so is this, are you, sir, the, the coach?
Yes.
Okay. Would, would all the folks, Mr. Duncan, would you all just stand up to be recognized for a moment? That's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. You may have a seat. You know, we did have a great presentation and a good discussion and again, this was the action taken and that was, the commission did vote seven to zero to support the concept of an expanded shooting park at a new location. We wanted to, you know, basically hear the presentation and see what, again, the commission had as a, as a response to that and it was very positive. And so obviously, things are going to move along and of course, probably one of the most significant portions of that puzzle will be the location. But in concept, it looks like there's a great need, great potential, great opportunity for that and of course, the devil's in the details. So, so we'll wait to see what further information we receive from Mr. Duncan and those others that have been involved with that, so. The second item with regard to, you know, some of the park, park project updates, the first being the tennis courts and I wanted to have Mr. Dellinger just briefly, is he in the room? That's okay. I wanted to have him bring us up to date on Ashbrook. My understanding is, is that the Ashbrook tennis courts are done. Is that correct, Ed? Do you know?
I believe that they are.
They were?
That's the first, that was where our priority was.
Right.
They're, they're, the other, the rest of them will not be ready until, I think, later on, until spring.
Right, right. There was, there was some, some issues in the construction process in order to, it seems like this particular contractor is extremely busy right now, doing a lot of these tennis court renovations and therefore, our project was, you know, put in the queue with everybody else, but as a result of his busyness, he did not complete all the courts as planned. So as far as the courts at Ferguson as well as at Phillips, those projects had been put off till the spring because we're past the paving season as far as the temperatures are concerned. So, so that's basically the update on that. Optimus Park Phase Two, you don't need any update on that. Several of you were in attendance at the, the opening for that and that was, that was very well attended and I, I took care of it, Mr. Dellinger, so. Ashbrook is essentially completed?
Yes, sir, Dr. Curly. The contractor has all the lines painted, the color's down, fence up, he's got a little landscaping and a couple other issues to do that should be finished within the next week or so. The other two, Phillips and Ferguson, are, we suspended that contract because of the winter months and the paving until next spring.
Very good. Thank you very much. And then the, the last of those project items were with reference to Sims Park and we did receive a initial, very rough kind of footprint of what could happen on the site that's in the Y Chamber of Commerce, you know, block there and, and this is again, an ongoing project and as time goes on, you'll see a lot more public input into that and we'll see as, as that continues forward, how that will, you know, play out because I believe there's some interest in the, the little theater possibly moving or, or, you know. So the, the project is actually potentially growing outside the boundaries of, of those four streets right now, so. And this was just an update that was presented to the commission also. And the last, last item briefly is just that we were all invited, as you are, to the, the Christmas barbecue, which will be at Irwin Park on the 12th, so. And that, that ends my report.
Thank you, sir.
So, and would we like to excuse these folks because I know some of these young people got to get home and to get their homework done.
I think they'd probably like to listen to us. Yes, that'd be fine, please, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, we, the, the next item is item seven and right after it is item eight is art space and a lot of folks here, it looks like, for that, but do we, is Mr. Brazel here?
Yes.
Okay, I haven't, I can't see that far. Okay, well, if he'd like to go ahead with audit results and the annual financial audit report, we've beaten that one to death and it's right here, we have copies of it. Come in. Now, there's a guy that grows a beard, you don't know him either. Okay, all right.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, thank you for allowing me to take some time to go over your 2014 audited financial statements. Everything going here?
Yeah, seven, exhibit seven.
Some audit highlights. We issued an unmodified opinion, which means that you were issued a clean opinion, which means that your financial statements are without reservation, are materially correct and are in conformity with GAAP generally accepted accounting principles. We had no material internal control weaknesses, which means we feel that your segregation of duties and various controls in place are adequate. Very, very cooperative staff. Melody, she does a great job in the, in the financial department there. She's very, very easy to work with, very, just able to get us everything that we need on time. Wendell does a great job as well, just very easy to work with. We, we submit your LGC to on time the past, every year and just a pleasure to work with. We enjoy it. It's a, it's a great job it comes to and they're a pleasure to work with, everyone in your finance department. And the next slide is a summary of your general fund. Had increases in your revenues of about 1.6 million. Expenditures increased around 700,000 and we'll go into a little bit more detail in the next, next few slides after, after we talk about fund balance. And fund balance, available fund balance is what you need to know. That is what the Local Government Commission looks at when they are evaluating your financial resources or financial health and how they compare you to various other municipalities of your size. And how we come up with available fund balance is we take your total fund balance and your general fund, we less your non-spendables, which is your inventory and your prepaid amounts and unless your stabilization by state statute, which is restricted by state law, this is your accounts receivable. This is money that you have not received in yet that is not available for appropriation or spending in the next fiscal year. And this slide here shows your calculation of your available fund balance, total fund balance of close to 25 million, less your required reservations of 7.2. Comes up with your available fund balance of around 17.7 million or 32% of your expenditures and transfers out is how, how they calculate your resource, resources on hand. And 8%, just to kind of put that in perspective there, 8% is around one month supply on hand. So you have about four months there of supply on hand and the minimum required, they don't, it's, it's not in the law or anything like that, but what they, they want you to make sure that you have is 8% or more and so that would make you around 4.4 million or 4.5 million. And you had an increase in your available fund balance of around 3.8 or 3.9 million. In prior year, it was about 25% available fund balance, so you had an increase of around And this next slide is just kind of a little reconciliation of how, how we come up for how the available fund balance happened. Your increase in available fund balance was close to 3.9. Your current revenues outpaced your expenditures by close to 6.4 million and then your transfers to and from, you had transfers out of about 2.3 net of your transfers in and then you had increases in encumbrances that are calculated into your available fund balance of around 150,000 to come up with your 3.9 roughly increase in available fund balance. And just to, just to note that you had appropriated around 2.1 million dollars of fund balance you had anticipated using, but that was not the case in the current, 2014 year. And just to show you a little breakdown of how, how your revenue sources and percentage-wise, your property taxes accounted for 52%. Sales and services accounted for 6%. This is your recreation fees and other, other services like that. Your other taxes and licenses, which is your sales tax, your franchise tax and various other taxes and licenses accounted for 31% and your other revenues, which is interest earnings, permits and fees and other restricted, unrestricted governmental revenues accounted for 11%. But the top three accounted for close to 89% of your total revenue sources. And all these percentages are very, very comparable to all the years preceding, so this is, this is very, very comparable. And kind of go through your top three revenue sources. Property taxes, you had an increase of around 1.7 million or 6% and this was due to the state implementation of the new tax and tag fee. So there was, they started billing and so this was a kind of a one-shot deal. This, you will not see this reoccurring in the, in the 2015 year. This is just a one-time thing where they started implementing, I think in September. So you had increased billings in the 2014 year, so, and this is pretty consistent across the other municipalities that we've seen, so pretty much everyone has seen this kind of, kind of jump in property taxes there and so this is, it should remain relatively comparable next year. It should, should, should slightly decrease there. You will not get that 1.4, 1.7 million dollars was related to the tax and tag.
Was that over a certain period, like 18 months or so?
It was 16.
Not a year?
16 months. I think there was four additional.
16.
Billings.
Yeah, 16 months.
Yes. Instead of your traditional 12, you had 16 since the state started, started, and they started collecting everything kind of in advance before you can get your tag and everything for your vehicle and different things, so that also increased your collection percentage as well, so that helped. So, so I think it's a good thing.
Your honor.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Your Honor.
Two quick questions on the, on those fees. Do we have an idea on what our percentage rate of collection is? And secondly, to go along with that, is have the, the fees, other than the collection cycle, have the fees stayed relatively the same or have they increased, other than the cycles?
They're relatively consistent. Yes, it was just kind of the billing cycles and how that, how that played out during the 2014 year.
Okay.
Pulling up your collection.
The collection percentage for the motor vehicle taxes went from around 83% to 89% during this year and with anticipation of being close to 100%.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Perfect. I was trying to find any of your financial statements, but I knew it had increased. I knew it had increased and everyone had seen an increase in motor vehicle collections as well, so that's, that's definitely been good. Your sales tax had a slight decrease here, but overall, sales tax that you receive, your distributions actually increased, but the reason for the decrease is the, the remaining of the county distribution of the hold harmless to the city. It was in the last year of the 379,000 decrease in the hold harmless payment. In 2015, you will receive no hold harmless payment from the county.
And, and that is, the, the difference from what we used to get is 1.9 million dollars every year, so we are down about 1.9 million dollars every year in sales tax and that has happened over five years and that's in accordance with what was approved previously. So the county cannot take any more money from us unless the state tells them that they can, so they've taken as much as they can.
And your sales and services had a decrease there of around 10% and mainly due to the timing differences of the reimbursements you received from the TDA or the conference center there. In the 2013 year, you actually had two reimbursements and in 2014, one, you had one reimbursement there, so it kind of overlapped there, so next year it should be, should be fairly consistent where the loss is capped and reimbursements are capped. This next slide, expenditures, kind of a breakdown, kind of we did on the revenues there to show you a breakdown of your expenditures. Public safety accounted for around 51%. Public works, 10%. Your general government, 17%. Your debt service, 12%. And your culture and rec was around 10%. And your expenditures totaled about 50.6 million. And then your top three expenditure functions. General government, you had an increase of around 4% there or around 350,000 and this was due to the new tax and tag with that. They charged a collection fee for that as well as some increase in salaries and benefits there accounted for the increase. Your public safety, slight decrease of around 2% and this is just mainly due to the timing of police grants, your asset forfeiture money and whether or not you spend that for capital-related items or various items needed there, so they fluctuate from year to year there, but it's mainly due to the asset forfeitures, but relatively, call centers, everything was consistent, but grant expenditures fluctuated there, so that was the cause of the main Public works, very, very consistent too, prior year, around $20,000 increase, but no, no major changes there. And then just to kind of show you a breakdown of your enterprise funds to, to show you your available fund balance that you would see compared to your general fund, for example, this will show for your electric, your water and sewer, your stormwater, your transit and your solid waste. So you had around 6.5 million of available for appropriation in the electric, 3.1 in your water and sewer, around $400,000 in your stormwater, transit had about 230,000 and your solid waste had available fund balance there, available appropriation of around 700,000 dollars. And you can see the comparison to the 2013 year. And then this next slide, just kind of shows you the breakdown of, of your debt in your government activities and your business-type activities. You had total outstanding debt of around 89 million dollars and you can see the breakdown between general obligation, limited obligation and various bonds and just your debt margin, what you could issue if you needed to would be around 351 million dollars, which I don't suggest doing that, but you could if, if you needed to. And this next slide kind of shows over the, over quite a few years spanning, kind of the, the slight, or the decreases in your debt service payments and debt service expenditures. kind of the, the slight, or the decreases in your debt service payments and debt service expenditures. It'll remain fairly consistent for the next, next couple of years. And then you, your revenue bonds will dramatically reduce your, your debt service there. It will be rolling off.
Question?
Yes.
That debt service you mentioned was approximately twelve percent of the general fund expenditures?
Yes.
Right. How does that compare to other municipalities that have maybe similar size as ours?
I would, I would say that's, that's pretty consistent. It, you know, around the ten percent mark or so, I would say, I would say you're definitely in the range there. And you're, you're one of the largest cities too as well, so you're probably, you know, maybe more projects going on and different things. So I would say you're right there around comparable to, to, to other municipalities. You're definitely not too high, not too low there. But I'd say that's pretty consistent from what I've seen. Maybe slightly higher, maybe slightly, you know, give or take one or two. But, but you're in line there. I definitely don't think you're debt dependent or debt heavy by no means.
And just as a matter of interest, we've talked about this before. If you look at this chart, you know, we're really going into fifteen, sixteen. And remember when we started down this path, you know, we had all the high debt. And now it's going to start to drop off.
Right.
So we're, we get, you know, so there's really, and, and you know, significantly in a few years. So the city will be in a position to be able to issue some more debt comfortably as time goes on.
Questions, Mr. Braz?
Any other questions?
Anyone? Yes, sir.
It's really not for you, but for the city itself. I just wanted to see if we could put into practice where we do collect cash at certain areas within the, if we could put in some type of procedures and safeguards and see if we could, you know, follow that up with some visits to different areas within the city that do collect cash. And I just want to, Melody?
We have a memo drafted for Ed's approval that we're sending out today or tomorrow. I guess tomorrow it'll go out to each department requesting them to tell us how much they handle and what their procedures and their internal controls are. And then we're going to start one by one doing surprise audits of that cash.
Thank you very much for that.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone? Well, overall, that's good news. Thank you very much. Appreciate you. We may have more as we go along, but it's, it's a, a, a pretty thick out folder.
It's a great read, great read.
Yeah.
But if you do have time, I would suggest looking at your MVNA, your management discussion analysis, kind of the first section there. It hits, you know, the bullet points, highlights your various large capital, you know, expenditures, why items increased, decreased, and, you know, management, that's management's discussion. So they kind of, they put that together there, you know, spent a lot of time on it. And it's really, that's, that's overall big picture, what you, what you need to look at there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We do need a motion to approve the audit.
So move or second?
Any other discussion? All in favor, approval? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Brad.
Kept looking for Ed's thermometers. Never could find.
Never could find any. Well, he's got his beard. Automated approval of redevelopment contract and option to purchase art space presentation by four fine gentlemen, Mr. Smith, Mr. Munn, Mr. Bomberdier, Mr. Hamburg. You're first, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At your August fifth meeting, the council did vote to negotiate an agreement with Art Space to sell the property Catty Corner from where we're sitting tonight at one seventy-seven West Franklin Boulevard on the condition that Art Space developed the property to be basically a four-story project for workspace, work lives space for artists. There is a development proposal and a contract with a great deal of detail in your agenda. If you choose to approve that contract and the resolution authorizing the upset bid process, we will run an ad within five days of tonight's meeting, and that will commence a ten-day upset bid period. The price proposed for the purchase of the property is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We obtained an appraisal in June that said it was valued at two hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. One correction to my memo in the agenda is I cite the tax value as a hundred and twenty-two thousand. There are actually three parcels over there, and I missed the two little ones. So the total is actually one seventy-one, one thirty-nine.
One thirty-nine.
Okay. And so that is basically the legalities of it, the paperwork that I have drafted. And of course, you've heard a lot about the project already in this past year. And I believe the manager wants to just briefly touch on some logistics of the site, and then we'll call Mr. Hamburg up.
Yes, one, one of the things that I wanted to address was the, the funds that the city would be receiving. I think we talked about this before, but it would be our recommendation that we would take those funds and reserve them for parking improvements in the downtown. Because as we talked about from time to time, we're going to have land use changes, and we want land use changes. We want our downtown to grow. And as it grows and changes, we're going to need to be able to use money to replace parking that we had somewhere else. And the same is true for other amenities in the downtown. So if the council is, so agrees that that's, we will put that in a reserve account and bring that back to you at a, at a subsequent meeting. And of course, this is after we receive the funds. Thank you.
When you say funds, you're talking about the purchase price?
Purchase, correct.
And, and not, not down the road.
Correct.
And so then I'll, I think Greg Hamburg is the one that's making the, the presentation.
Welcome, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council? I got that right. That's good. My name's Greg Hamburg. I'm the senior vice president of properties for Art Space Projects. Good to be here again, speaking with you. As you know about Art Space, Art Space is a five oh one C three nonprofit, real estate developer for the arts, active all around the country. I think you've seen this slide before, it's changed a little bit. You know, it's your last, we had completed thirty-five buildings. We've now completed thirty-seven. A wonderful project in Seattle, Washington, rolled off the assembly line this summer, as did our work in East Harlem, New York City as well was completed. We're continuing to work in Hamilton, Ohio, where we have a building under construction, and also Loveland, Colorado. And on Thursday, we will host a construction financing on a project in Dearborn, Michigan, and next week on a project in Michigan City, Indiana. So the work.
Greg, Greg, if you could project just a little bit more, that mic's not really picking you up good.
Sure. So the work continues, continues at Art Space around the country. And we are excited about the work that we're doing here in Gastonia. Our mission is very simple, to create, foster and preserve affordable space for artists and arts organizations. And we do this with passion, we do this at the request of communities and in the partnership of communities. You know, artists and space benefits communities in a variety of different ways. Most of our work animates underutilized property. We bring vacant properties back under the tax rules. We boost area property values. And we foster safety and livability. We anchor arts districts, and we attract additional artists and arts-related businesses to the communities where we work. Why Gastonia? It's all about revitalizing downtown, and we've seen this kind of activity work in communities the size of Gastonia all around the country. I mentioned Hamilton, Ohio, very similar size community outside of Cincinnati, Dearborn, Michigan City. These, this type of work has a tremendous benefit, increasing economic activities in communities just like Gastonia. Helps communities maintain their competitive edge. It's a new, unique niche of development that communities are realizing and all around the country. We started this by doing homework. In two thousand and twelve, we conducted a survey of artists and arts-related businesses and their space needs. Five hundred and sixty-eight artists responded to that, along with a number of businesses. A hundred and fifty arts, a hundred and forty-nine artists expressed an interest in locating in a building in downtown Gastonia. Additional artists expressed interest in working studios, and businesses expressed interest in commercial space. That helped us scale a project appropriately for this downtown community. We looked at cultural asset mapping in your downtown and really looked at what was happening on Main Avenue and around Main Avenue on South Street. And we saw this tremendous collection of restaurants and cafes, of arts organizations, of small creative businesses, of other community gathering spaces and places of worship. And it really helped us focus in on the site that we're talking about right now. It's on the southeast corner of South Street and Franklin Boulevard. We looked closer at South Street and looked at just the amazing things that are happening connecting the park to the north with the, with the York Chester Historic District to the south. We believe that this site is the incredibly appropriate site for this project. Highly visible, Franklin's the main artery through town. It's really going to be that bridge between downtown and York Chester neighborhood. It's the gateway to downtown. It's going to invigorate the last, the fourth corner of that intersection. And it's going to build on the activity that's happening in your arts community today. We've completed a, a lot of work. In two thousand and twelve, we did the preliminary feasibility study in the artist market survey. Since we executed the predevelopment contract with the community foundation in two thousand and thirteen, we've looked at other sites, we've developed a preliminary development concept. We've been negotiating with your city staff for this upset bid process and the site control. This is all important because there's a lot of work left to do. It really can only happen after we get through this site control process. Site control is critical because on January twenty-third, we need to submit an application to the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency for the bulk of financing that's going to be necessary to complete this project. Site control is a threshold application item. It also is important so that we have confidence in the continued architectural design and engineering work as we continue to work with banks, investors and lawyers to put this project together and continue the capital campaign associated with the philanthropic cap related to this project. If all this goes according to plan, we should be beginning construction in two thousand and sixteen and complete and occupied in two thousand and seventeen. What will the project deliver? We'll talk about some architectural plans in just a moment, but forty artist live-work dwelling units. Four of those small studio units, twenty-one bedroom units, twelve two-bedroom units, and four three-bedroom units, all appropriately designed to meet the space needs of artists and their families. We're going to have four commercial spaces ranging from seven hundred square feet at the small size to about fifteen hundred square feet at the larger size. We're going to have a community, a highly visible community art gallery space right at the front door of this building. It's going to be a gathering space where folks outside of the walls of the building can come and interact with the artists inside the building. We're going to have an outdoor terrace where artists can recreate on the second floor of this building. An art alley, which we'll show you, that's really going to provide that pedestrian connection between the Support Inc. building and, and this project. And forty-three parking spaces on-site. One space per dwelling unit plus a couple of extras. We're hoping that we can increase that number through continued site design work. The bonus is our work with Caramount Hill, who has, who has executed a letter of interest to open a wellness center in the site, and that's one of those four commercial spaces in the building. This is a site plan and shows the ground floor of the facility. You'll see that we have the building brought up on the street front on South Street and Franklin Boulevard. You'll see on the upper portion of the building, an art alley that stretches from Franklin Boulevard back to the parking area. Again, that art alley is important for a couple of things. One is it provides an outdoor gathering space for folks, but it also preserves the side access for the Support Inc. building, which is very important for that neighbor. The parking spaces to the rear include a forty-three total space, and seven of those are handicap accessible spaces. We're hoping that we can find a way to share those spaces to meet other community needs during, during off-peak hours. In a little bit more detail, this is the ground floor without the site. You can see that large square on the upper left, the community gallery space. Again, that's not a rented commercial space. That's space where the community at large can come in and enjoy the artistic activity in the building. The space next to that is the space dedicated for the wellness center. And then three smaller commercial spaces for to-be-identified arts-related businesses. On the second, third, fourth and fifth floor of the building, we have the artist live-work units. And a very efficient, very conventional, extremely, I think, well-designed in a way that's going to meet, meet the needs of artists and their families. Again, the collection of studios, ones, twos and three-bedroom units. This is the up, this is the third floor building.
Greg, how big are those one bedrooms there?
The one bedrooms are about eight hundred and nine hundred square feet in size.
In these lots?
In these lots. The studio is about seven hundred square feet. The two bedrooms are about eleven hundred square feet. And the three bedrooms are, I believe, around fourteen hundred square feet. Really nicely sized units. And again, a live-work unit is a unit that's a little bit larger than a traditional apartment unit. It's designed with a layout that's a little bit more flexible so that the family can decide how they're going to use that for their living needs and their working needs. And it's designed in a, in a durable way, so the unit will wear well as that artistic activity happens. And most importantly, perhaps, it's managed in a way that encourages the artistic vitality of the community that's occupying the building. This is a rendering of what the building will look like. We're very excited about this. This is a challenge, this is a historic, we're working hard to find an architectural design that would both honor the historic integrity of this district, but also be an expression of something new. And I think that the materials, the brick that you see, the combination of other materials, the massing, it's appropriate both for this site at the corner of Franklin and South, and it's also appropriate in its materials and in its architectural treatment. I want to thank you, everybody here in the room. The city's been tremendously supportive of this project to date. The community foundation has just been our partner all the way. David Belkanon Foundation, Pamela Kimball Warlick, Robinson Cameron Foundation, Prime Foundation. Everybody's been at the table participating, helping us move this project forward. We look forward to your support and hope that we can take the next step and advance this project to its financing applications. Available for any questions you have.
Questions, Mr. Hamburg? Yes, sir.
Not such a question, it's just a comment. Having seen this from when we took the trip to Minnesota quite a few years ago and met a lot of the staff with Art Space. I want to thank you guys for, for the way you have worked. I mean, when I first, we got our agenda and I saw the drawing and was looking at the plans, even, even the, the alleyway, the, the covered alleyway, because you knew the neighbor was concerned about having access. I mean, you, you took the time to listen to every single concern that was brought forward. And, and as a municipality, you work with a lot. Developers here and there will say, well, we give you this, but we'll give you that, but we need this. And it's, it's always a struggle, and you never feel complete at the end of it. And this one, it just seems like you took every single concern that was thrown at you and adjusted your needs to meet ours. So I felt really good when I saw the drawing and the floor plans and everything else. I was thrilled, 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 thrilled. So I, I just wanted to thank you guys for being so accommodating to the city and the commercial residents of the city and, and when they express their needs. How, how many meetings did we have to, to allow public input? I mean, way more than we do for anything else. It was just above and beyond, so just a comment and to say thank you.
Well, thank you for the comment. I will tell you that I think that the art alley is the most interesting aspect of the project. And I think that it's, it's not surprising to me, because I've done this type of work around the country, that interesting solutions come out of trying to address many problems or many concerns. And I think that it's terrific to see that solution come out in a way that's a solution not just that makes this project more interesting, but also a solution that makes the neighbors, addresses the neighbors' concerns. So thank you.
Really great.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Greg, are you still working with Saint Stevens on addressing the parking issue, where they can get some spaces or so on a Sunday?
You know, yes. And I know that there are other conversations with Saint Stevens related to the back parking lot, to the bank parking lot as well. It's interesting, you know, that if you look at the site plan, there is a bank of handicap accessible spaces. There are very positive things about that, and then there's some constraining things about that. The positive things are, as you think about sharing spaces, you think about the need for parking and direct proximity to the entrance to the Saint Stevens Church, and, and perhaps that's mobility-related. I think that those parking spaces provide an opportunity, and that's a positive. The negative side, you know, each one of those handicap parking spaces takes up about the space of two more conventional spaces. And so in some ways, our space program is, seven, seven accessible spaces or more than we would typically kind of put in a project, and that is reducing the overall parking count from forty, you know, from, from perhaps forty-six or forty-seven down to forty-three. So we're going to continue to try to maximize the parking that we can provide on this site. And we do believe that we need to reserve one space per dwelling unit that we create just to meet the need, the marketing needs of the families. But we'll continue to push that envelope. The site is only so large, and, and you end up in a, it's a box that we're, that we're stuck in.
One of the places they were looking... One of the places they were looking at was over here by BB&amp;T Bank putting stairs down so they can use the parking there on Sunday since the bank's not open.
We are working with the bank on that, and so that work is underway. We're trying to get all the legal papers, you know how complicated banks are, and trying to make sure that we have to get the agreement.
I like the way the banks got thrown under the bus instead of the lawyers this time.
It is, yeah, right. It's actually the bank's lawyers, right?
The bank's lawyers, thank you.
But, yeah, we're making progress on that, and that's going forward as well.
I do know that Mr. Richard Rankin would also like to say a few words after any questions, remaining questions from him.
Are there any other questions of Mr. Hamburg? Let me say before Mr. Rankin comes up, he never has a few questions, comments. Seriously, it was brought up earlier, and I just want, for the record, I would like that to know, I'm a native, I've been here forever, will be. I've never heard of art space a couple of years ago. And it is in Mr. Pierceall's district that they were looking, and they asked us to take a look at it. And we really wanted to take a look at them, to tell you the truth, and just say, who are they and what are they doing, et cetera? And we spent a grand total of twenty-four hours in Minneapolis. I thought about it when I watched that quote-unquote game Sunday. The, and it was all completely, that we were asked to come up and to go to St. Paul and go to, about four or five different locations that they have, and their general headquarters, their general office, which is in an old Low Ray Mill-type situation. And that was all paid for by the David Belkanon Foundation, not anything in the city. But we were gone twenty-four hours, and it was, having the fact, the fact that he and I both were in, been known to be in the real estate business, it was extremely interesting to us. And you seem to have a very professional group up there too that you work with. So I just thought I'd tell you that. We didn't, we didn't know who we were going to partner with here hopefully, but we did after we left, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Hamburg? If not, I'll have Dr. Rankin to come forward, if he's still talking to me. Here you are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. And I do want to thank City Manager Ed Munn and the city planners for their expertise and kindness throughout this process. I am Richard Rankin, and I am President of the Community Foundation of Gaston County. We are, the community foundation is more excited than ever and more committed than ever to the success of the art space project. We are excited about what it means for artists, for affordable housing for artists, but really the community foundation's primary hope has always been that this would lead to the revitalization of downtown Gastonia. And as we look at this project now, and we see the Low Ray project and the possibility of the Grizzlies project, we see a corridor of a bright future for Gastonia, and we see art space, this project, joining that corridor to downtown. So I just want everyone to know that the community foundation remains committed. We probably have about another million dollars that we're going to have to raise, and we remain committed, and we will be successful. We hope that you will. We thank you for your past support, and we hope you'll pass this contract and the upset bid project. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Rankin? Dr. Rankin? Thank you, sir. Well said. Okay.
The motion that is recommended by staff is to declare the property serv plus, approve the resolution authorizing the upset bid, and approve the development agreement in substantially the form that it is in the agenda. There were a couple of minor ands and spaces and parentheses or two. We have actually finalized the agreement, and it's, you know, no changes at all practically from what's in the agenda, so that would be the motion to approve.
Is there a motion?
I have a motion that we approve the motion that's in the agenda as written.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. And then you're next.
Everybody to know that I support the art space. I've been opposed to parking, and I'm still opposed to building on the parking lot. And of course, supported Low Ray, and I look forward to having a ballpark somewhere in Gaston County someday, Gastonia. And I try to be positive with all projects, but I really feel like that there were so many other places that art space could have gone and they meet, like the Brothers Funeral Home property, they're going to vacate there. And of course, that's in the past, that's not going to happen. But still, I'm going to remain consistent with my vote because I like to do that. And when I vote no, it's the vote no on this property, not on art space. Once this is settled, then I'm behind you a hundred percent. I just want you to know that. I'm going to help work with you to be very successful with this. But I'm going to be consistent with what I did. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
I want to find out, how did we land on a hundred and fifty dollars? A hundred and fifty thousand?
That was the offer.
That was the offer. Okay. Was that based on like us figuring that, you know, the tax was one-twenty-two and now it's one-seventy-one?
That was the offer from Art Space and their partners. We didn't suggest that number. That was the offer. It came from them, so.
If I may add, the part of this to clear it up, it's only because I researched it, is as Mr. Smith said, the front parcel, there's three, but there's just little slivers at the back. But you total them together as tax value, and it's a hundred and seventy-one thousand one thirty-nine. I don't, I've looked at appraisal over, I don't know if you have from a while back, and you thought it was a little unusual one, but you got it. But, you know, just playing a little bit with it. Of course, we all, all of us up here, everyone here knows that the present tax value could be two million dollars. It's, we still know the income to Mr. Brazel's budget is zero, because it's on with the city. Now, the gazette quoted us, I don't know how, if that's anywhere close to being correct, on seven and a half million dollars. Sounds good to me. When it's finished with the Caramont and all in there, just city alone, the taxes are basically forty thousand dollars a year plus utilities. That sort of got my attention when I played with it a little bit. If there were taxes on it presently, it'd be less than a thousand dollars a year. So right now, based on this tax value, so if a tax value of seven and a half million dollars fifty-three cents, the city of Gastonia, that is not Gaston County, is eighty-seven. So forty thousand a year plus utilities and fees, and just, I'm going at it from that standpoint.
So as an unimproved property, it'd be a thousand dollars in taxes and much, much higher when it's improved?
Whether it's owned by the, by you, me, or the city, but it would be a thousand dollars a year. But it, based on this tax value, city only, and a little bit more than that for the counties, could be twenty, probably twenty-four hundred dollars a year. But, and that's all three parcels. But now, the city, of course, doesn't pay taxes, and so on real estate. Questions?
One more.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
This is sold as-is, correct?
That's correct.
So if there's tanks or anything?
Right. And it's going to give them an option after the upset bid period runs, they will have an option on the property for up to two years. They hopefully, you know, won't take that long, but they have all the time that they need to do any sort of environmental assessment of the property that they want to do. But it will be as-is after that.
Due diligence.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
Just to go back to what Councilman Gallagher was saying, that hundred and fifty is for that one piece, that partial over there. But in the long run, the long term, what art space will contribute to economic development to the city of Gastonia, we don't know how much it's going to be, but we know that they're going to have a tremendous impact on this corridor. And when you factor that in, then I think you get a larger number than the hundred and fifty. But the hundred and fifty is what that particular property is going to set for.
Now, just for the record, Council, that offer that's on the tape is for the parcels one oh five, seven, six, five, six, six, and six, seven.
Correct.
That goes down to the Masonic, where there's a little parcel in between there.
It's like an L-shaped block, almost.
Yeah, okay. Just a long alley, two alleyways is basically. It's tiny. But that's behind it. Looks like there is an, had an alleyway between there too, between the, running behind Harold Jones's property there, and it looks like a, what is that lip? It's not marked, so do you think that that's just an alleyway?
It is, Mayor. It's ingress egress, and a part of our development agreement is to continue that ingress egress primarily to the back of the Support Building, Support Inc.
All right. Any other questions? Yes?
I just had one question I forgot to ask it earlier when Greg was up here. I know when we talked about this and voted on this earlier, not that we're going to go either way, but it was a four-story building. I noticed in the plans and the drawings, it's now a five-story building, so we've gone up a story, correct? I'm not imagining that.
Well, the text of the development agreement says at least four stories.
At least four stories, okay. I just want to make sure we didn't need to change any wording on that because the renderings are very nice, and I'm like, gosh, I'm going to get down the road and say, no, they can only build four because we said...
No, we won't do that. If they want to build more, we'll take more, but...
Well, yeah, that was the point there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, Council or Mr. Munn, anyone? Munn there? Is there a motion to approve?
There already has one.
Motion to second.
I believe we even had a second. Any other discussion? Okay. See if you're on your toes. All in favor of accepting the motion, raise your hand, please. One, two, three, four, five. All opposed? Okay, five to two. It has passed. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Thank y'all for coming too, bud. Ernest, you said you weren't going to be here. You told me you weren't coming. Glad to have everyone.
Thank you. Thank you for what you did. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next item, that's item eight, and we'll go now, skip over what we've done, item nine. Item ten is award boundary adjustments. Presentation by City Manager Ed Munn, please. Item ten, number ten.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, North Carolina statutes provide for the city to change its wards periodically after major annexations and after census. We, because we're an at-large system in terms of the voting, even though we're represented by ward, we're not mandated to make that change. We have changed, remember making changes in the nineteen-eighties. We also made one in nineteen ninety-seven and two thousand and one, where we adjusted the ward boundaries so that the populations are fairly equal in size. The population census was seventy-one thousand, seven hundred forty-one for Gastonia. It's probably about seventy-three thousand now. Even the numbers you're looking at are just a rough estimate of approximately how many people live in each of these particular wards. The average population would be eleven thousand, nine hundred fifty-seven. As time goes on, the wards get out of line a little bit in population, and the march has been mostly eastward, south and eastward, because a lot of our annexations and growth to the north and northwest were industrial and commercial in nature. Most of our residential development has been south and east. So what the planning department did was put together an option, and then a second option, to equalize or get pretty close to where the populations in each of the wards would represent approximately the same amount of individuals. There's no requirement that the city do it, but if the city is going to do it for the next election, certainly want to do it in enough time so that it's well prior to the election. And so what you have before you are choices. There is an option one and an option two, and also you have an option not to do anything at all, or you could tell us to develop an option three. And so we would have, if council directs us, we will, and to make a change, we are prepared to then have a public hearing advertised for December the sixteenth, the next city council meeting, and make the final decision there. And so be glad to answer any questions the council may have.
Yes, sir, Mr. Pierceall?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Gallagher?
I know this was, this issue was brought up right after this council was elected because we kind of discussed it, and there was some kind of preliminary draw, because Walt and I talked about this earlier. One of the drawings had Mr. Kimball, or one of the preliminary thoughts had Mr. Kimball actually outside of his district, and we never took any action on it. What brought this up now? I mean, we're getting to the end of our term. What prompted this to come up now?
Well, as you can see from the dates, nineteen ninety-seven, two thousand and one, it isn't always on any regular basis. It was brought up by the planning staff, I think, a couple of years ago to take a look at it. At the time, we passed it around and got some input. There was some, I think, some folks that wanted some other lines drawn, and we were busy doing other things, and we never really, it wasn't a matter of priority. Now, the question is that with the election coming up, do you want to make any changes? If you do want to make changes, it's, you know, it would be good to do it now or wait till after the election.
So this was your idea?
Was it my idea not to?
To bring this up now? To do this now?
Well, what has happened was that it was brought forward by the planning department, and it was, it was really one of the items that was pending before us, and has been for all this time, that why we brought it forward now is because in the conversation that kind of spilled over from the two-year, four-year terms, the request would say, well, where are those ward boundaries? Should we not make changes now? I said, okay, well, I will take that forward and let the council make a decision on that.
Do you want to make a comment? I asked that they look at this too, in addition, because now the original map, I mean, the map that we're under right now, it's not shown there. And Ward one is way out of bounds. Award six and four, Ward one, the number of people there, a lot more than those of yours combined. And I told Mr. Greg once before we did this, I heard it made a board meeting, and it would have your park, parking, have fire stand. And I was one of the ones that wanted to take a look at these two things and see if we couldn't balance out the numbers so we could equalize the numbers of all the wards, and there wouldn't be an overweighted ward with a lot more people in one than the other. And that's the way it's been over the years, they've tried to balance these things out. And like Mr. Munn says, it shifted to the east. And I think that we should be balanced out with the number of people in each ward. It's hard to take yours and do much with it, and I understand, so. But Mr. Greg's ward, he kind of takes them all at once, which is fine, he has a lot of us here. So my preference would be number two, Matt, number two.
One more.
Yes, sir.
That's, I mean, perfectly logical reasoning, Councilman McKeer. But at this time, and I'm not saying I'm not in favor of redrawing the lines, but at this time, what we've done with the new wards, how we're going to vote for two versus four, changing the mayor to two, we're throwing a lot at the general public in this election. And I just assume wait till the new council came in in two thousand and fifteen and let them deal with ward lines. I'm, you know, I realize that citizens vote not in ward lines, but across ward lines to elect all of us. But if you look at the election results and the numbers that vote in each district, some people will only vote for their ward representative. They don't vote for, you know, all six of us. They'll vote for the mayor and the person that represents their ward. And they're adamant about voting that way, and I just think we've thrown enough at them for this next election. If we want to, if we want to do this, let's let the next council... If we wanna, if we wanna do this, let's, let's let the next Council fiddle with it after the two thousand and fifteen election. Just personal opinion only, so.
I have a question. Off of Robinwood Road, there's a whole bunch of houses being built, um, coming up within the next year. Are they seen in here at all?
No, they're not. Th- th- those, the numbers that you have here are strictly the census.
Just census.
Twenty-ten census.
Twenty-ten census.
Correct.
Yeah, so it would not, they would not be included.
So, it'd have to be the next census.
Yeah, it, we, well, we, we've done estimates, particularly when we do big annexations, and you can do some estimating yourself. Uh, the pla- the planning staff can do that, uh, where you say, okay, you, you, 'cause you know the population by census, uh, blocks, and, and, uh, then you can then add building permits and go through a little more extensive process, and then project an estimate of how many average number of people you think are there, and then you can add it. And we could use that as a means of doing it also. Uh, we do that in, when we've done major annexations. That's the way we've, when we've adjusted after those.
According to your note here, this memorandum, you know, it says, um, the Council is authorized to make changes, but is not required to do so. So, we don't have to do anything on this. We can just have what we have now.
Correct. It, it, as, as I understand it, and Ash, correct me, that, that if we were strictly by district, there actually may be a requirement to do it, but because we're the, the residents, but then elected at large, it's optional. And the city's done it periodically. When, when they feel the wards are too far out of line, then the Council makes an adjustment.
Mr. Greg?
I, I'm kinda, uh, um, feeling the way that Councilman Pierceall is that, I, I know we've discussed it in the early on, and at this point, I'm not really sure, there's not a lot of difference between any of these, to be real honest, the way I've looked at them. So, it might be just as well to table it, if, I don't know if you've made that motion or not, but to table it until after the first, uh, the, the le- election, after the election in November of, uh, fifte- fifteen.
I did not.
You did not make that motion.
She, she's asking that.
Okay.
Excuse me, uh, Mr. Gallagher's asking, is that a motion?
Okay.
No, no, don't make a motion, let me see this.
Well, now, excuse me, she can make a motion, she's got the floor right now if she wants to, and then you can go from there.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I, I would like to make a motion to, uh, table this conversation until after the next general election.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. McTeer. All right. Yes.
I'd like to make a comment, you know, I'm somewhat ambivalent, you know? In one regard, you say, well, it doesn't seem that much different, which is true, and that also plays to the, you know, option to do it, because it doesn't seem that much different, you know? So, um, sometimes, you know, when, uh, when efforts are made, time's expended, uh, you know, things are processed, sometimes it's good to get it done and move on and get it off the table, you know what I'm saying? I, I'm trying to figure this out, that, you know, is this really gonna help anybody or hurt anybody, or, I mean, but if I look at it very, very simplistically, the only thing I can think is it might help some citizens a little bit understand where boundaries are, but they're all gonna still have to refer to a map, you know? So, so that's why I'm kinda ambivalent. But I do know that there was some time taken to do this, and I know if we just put it off till the next Council, whatever, I'm, I'm not sure where that seems to be our responsibility or liability to put it off. So, I could very easily pass this and feel okay with that and sleep well tonight, and if you all are, you know, have a stronger opinion than mine, I'll defer to that, and, you know, I'll sleep well tonight, too, you know? So, um, but obviously, it was brought up for some reason, and I guess if there is some balancing of population with this, then I would, you know, personally probably think that the lines look a little cleaner with option two than they do with option one. So, I, I would certainly support that if that was the motion.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a substitute motion?
Oh, you through?
Oh, I'm through, yeah.
Okay, yes, sir.
Uh, make a substitute motion.
Substitute motion.
If we approve, would you advantage for, uh, option two?
I can second that for discussion.
Okay, discussion. Council, you stay with me now. Let's see. There is a, there is a motion and a second. Any discussion on the substitute motion? All right, we'll have to vote on the substitute motion.
First, yes.
First. All in favor of the substitute motion, raise your hand. One, two, three. All opposed? One, two, three, four. Okay. If there's no other discussion, we'll now have the, uh, vote on the motion. And the motion is to, uh, what word?
Table.
Table. Okay, or continue at later time. And there's been a second. All in favor of that motion, raise your hand, please. One, two, three, four. All opposed? One, two, three. All right, and all right, ma'am. Thank you, thank everyone. I got seven copies of these maps. Boy, I was, back in the seventies, I was, boy, you were, but I was Ward three, I, I just now, I'm now figuring out where I was, so, right in the center of town, so it is good to have. I think these were, this was a good conversation, and, and Dr. N, you were right, pretty much, I, that, that big word you said, that was, that was imbibled, that, uh, you were right on target there, after I, you know, listened to that. Seriously, uh, people, probably, some people do just go, and, and I'm sure vote in their ward, just like, uh, uh, other situations. Item eleven, City Attorney's Report, uh, Mr. Smith?
I'm all art spaced out, no more report.
You're doing good.
Fifty pages. Okay, uh, City Managers' Report, Mr. Munn?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Members of Council, a, a few things. One, uh, the, in the, uh, Standard Building across the street here, uh, we, there appears to be that they have tenants to fill that all up, uh, which is good news, you know? And we're excited about one of the tenants, the Girl Scouts. And the Girl Scouts are looking for a seven-year lease, and they're gonna be leasing it from an owner, 'cause they're breaking that all up into condominiums. So, the, the Standard Building will be owned by somebody, and the next building will be owned by somebody, and then the individual units upstairs, the residential will be owned. But this is some, their office, the, the Girl Scouts' office, and also retail downstairs. Now, one of the things that they're requesting is their cookie trailer, uh, for a month and a half, uh, in February, early March, to be able to put.
Absolutely not.
In the parking lot, and, uh, we will, we have a place where it can go where it does not interfere with any parking spaces, and we think that that will work. We also have a provision that within the next seven years, if we have to move it around, we can move it around, uh, but within that, that general area, that will bring the Girl Scouts down here as a tenant, and we would, so, uh, I was going to make that agreement. We, we control basically the parking lot back there. That seemed like a reasonable thing, to be able to get that, that you here, and I just wanted to verify that with the City Council, if, that, that you feel it's good.
Yes.
At what level of security would we put on that trailer? Because it seems like something that would really concern a lot of people, if the cookie trailer falls.
To the Cookie Monster.
Well, we don't know that, Dave.
Could be there.
Yeah.
Could be ambivalent.
It, it may be a non-issue soon. I, I saw, was it just yesterday, the day before, I guess yesterday, that Girl Scouts are gonna start accepting online orders.
Oh, really?
And shipping, so.
Really?
Cookie trailer may be a thing of the past here, but then the next year or so.
Maybe healthier food, too.
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna get any healthier. Yeah, outsourced to Amazon.
I have a one question. I, I, I support that one hundred and fifty percent, but has there been any conversation with some of the downtown merchants that that is gonna possibly happen, that there will be a trailer back there, so they don't just read it in the paper? I mean, I know we control the parking lot, the city does, but it's always, I don't, just a quick.
But it's not gonna be back there permanently.
No, no, just, just for, it's a month, uh, just for about a month, it's a month and a half for you.
Right, right.
But no, we, we have not, uh, we can do that, uh, and, and talk to everybody around there, and let them know what's going on.
Well, it, it just seems like that that just adds to the, uh, PR, uh, and to the communication that, that we're trying to establish. I don't know that it's necessary, it just might be nice.
Yeah, and, and it's, it, you, you, you bring a good point, uh, because I, I think if it was another group that just wanted to put a trailer back there, I think we'd say no.
Right, right.
Uh, I mean, I, I think that, that, I mean, just that, because we're doing this, doesn't mean we're gonna approve every trailer, you know, like, every business downtown now wants to put a, a, a trailer back there. Now, this is a very limited thing, and.
No double wides?
Pardon me?
No double wides?
No.
Looks good to have them downtown.
Yeah, so we'll communicate all of that with the, with.
Well, then they'll have the, they'll have the story from the city, okay?
Yes. Uh, one of the things that we keep, that we, and, and I think one of the things that, uh, I think Councilman Pierceall will talk about is our, our, our meeting that we had with the downtown merchants, uh, but it, getting foot traffic downtown. Retail businesses have a hard time surviving without foot, foot traffic, and trying to get these buildings filled.
Right.
With, and, and folks that are with the Girl Scouts, uh, and the folks that will come down to buy the retail stuff out of their retail store, and the people that will work for the Girl Scouts are all potential customers. And so, that's really what we're, you know, anything that we can do to fill the stores up.
Yes, sir, Doc.
Will, will, will they occupy the, the first floor entirely with their retail, or?
No, not the entire first floor, uh, they, they, they're gonna occupy some of the first floor, the old offices that the city used to have some years ago on the second floor. And they will, uh, the, the rest of the Standard Building, uh, will, there's a use coming in that is a, a, a cabinet furniture business that does outdoor, outdoor stuff and indoor stuff, and that, and that, that's what is going to go through the rest of. It appears that that's what's coming for, for the rest of Standard. We always thought it was gonna be a restaurant. It was supposed to be Neifin's Restaurant from Shelby, that never came. And, uh, but they are, uh, this, this, this tenant is wanting to, to locate there, and they would actually use that patio area to display some of their, their goods. And we said so long as the city, it, it meets the city's appearance, and that it's, that it's, that it's appropriate there. But that would fill up the first floor of the, of Standard, a little bit Girl Scouts, but mostly the, the cabinets replaced.
Did, excuse me, um.
Mayor? Yeah, uh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Did the Standard ever get qualified or certified to be a historical building years ago?
I don't think it ever got the tax, not for tax.
Standpoint, not from a tax standpoint, no.
Okay, 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 good, that, okay.
Do you need a motion? Or do you just need general approval?
You talking about on the cookie?
Yeah, on the trailer and your.
I think just general approval.
Okay, I, I think the consensus is that we're okay with that.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah. There you go. They can bring the cookies.
And, and I'll, I'll let Councilman Pierceall talk about our meeting with the merchants, uh, and I'll be happy to add anything afterwards. Uh, this Friday, I'm meeting with the other city managers and the county manager. We will really try to focus in on exactly, I don't yet have the number of the tax revale, which will be finished, you know, it has to be finished the end of this month. Uh, they, again, estimates are maybe five percent decrease for us, but that's just general. We don't have it broken out by the city yet, we were supposed to by the first week in December, so that's why I'll try to get on Friday, uh, and that'll be about a million dollars a year for us, uh, but we, which we're prepared for. But, uh, I don't know that that's the number, so we're gonna try to find that number, and that ties into the next item, which is our strategic planning session. It's almost, we're getting into late Ja- late January, if you could check your calendars. Uh, we will be contacting you, uh, and trying to see which, which dates are good for you. We've been doing it on Saturdays or Fridays, what, what day is good for you, and what, you know, that which, which part of the end of January, or maybe even the first of February, but it, like to, the, there's a weekend, the twenty-third of January, the thirtieth of January, I think is Friday. On, on the twenty-ninth of January, I know we're gonna get some electricity's information, but, uh, this is sometime in, in late January, we should have our, our work session, or, or really our strategic planning session, which is really, this Council's last year, you know? And so, what we're gonna be doing is talking about, uh, we will definitely know the, what, what the impact of the tax revale will be. And whenever we get the numbers here, there's also a ser- that, what has happened and, and what will definitely happen this time, be a lot of appeals, and the appeals will further bring that number down. So, we'll, we'll, uh, account for that in our planning purposes going forward. So, uh, if you, just please look at your schedule, and then we'll be back in touch with you talking about that. I passed out barbecue tickets for everybody, and anybody that wants to serve as volunteers, and I think, uh, Councilman McTeer and Councilman Pierceall, Jenny wanna be volunteers, so we'll make sure that they get added to the serving. And, uh, the one job you don't wanna do is, is serve ice cream, that's, that's, that's too, that's not, not pleasant. Uh, the Christmas parade meeting is going on tonight, while we're meeting here down at the police building, so they'll have all the specifics about what's going on there, and I think Regina will be contacting you about that, and I think the signs are over here. For everyone to take their sign with them, so you're all in different cars and things, and that way, we know the, you know the sign, your sign is in your hands. Okay.
At this point, we don't know, uh, where to tell folks to go as far as it's gonna be in the, in the parade.
I'm, I'm, pardon, I'm sorry.
Let's do it again. I said, at this point, right now, if they're meeting right now, we don't know where to tell folks to meet that's gonna be in the parade.
Yeah. I, I don't know, I, yeah, as far as I, I, I believe I've heard it was over by the post office, but I don't, I, I don't.
I think it's gonna be down at, uh.
Sears?
I think the staging area is the same.
I think it's been, I don't know why, I think it's the Board of Election, I think it'll start at three, at Chester.
Yeah, I think it's right.
At Chester.
Yeah, I think that's.
But that's right at three twenty-one, that's real bad.
It is three twenty-one, well.
That's where the parade, that's where the parade will start?
Mm-hmm, and end at the shrimp boat. That's what they say.
At Maine on, at three twenty-one, right? Yeah.
Uh, yeah, Chester, uh, Maine, uh, Maine and, uh, three twenty-one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a feeling, though, that the staging is gonna be back at Sears Building again.
More, more room.
Because they need room to get to that point, so.
Certainly makes sense.
But I don't think, I don't, you know, that's just what I recall from, uh, the documentation we got from staff.
I thought you had it inside school.
Well, I will tonight.
We'll know, we'll know more sometime, though, okay? God, that makes sense, so.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I think, yeah.
Uh, ne- next, we are, we are actually testing our streaming. Uh, remember that was discussed at the last Council meeting, and, uh, tonight, we are streaming, right? And you're the streamer, right? Pardon me? It's going real well.
And where's that website?
This is the test, I'm not sure, is it, is it actually live?
It's www.jimcalforreelection.com.
Oh, here.
Here you go.
Oh, there it is.
Wait.
Yeah, yeah.
Wait a second.
There's a little delay. There is a little delay.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 it's got me in my board.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So, where do I find that online?
Lovely people.
I, I will send the. It's a secret link?
Secret link.
It's a secret. Mine better, better, keep it up.
Oh, you do so good.
It's the missing link.
Okay.
That is excellent.
A couple of issues, um, with anything that was on the Elmo, it was a, it was blurry, a little bit blurry, and if you're not talking directly into the mics, it's not picking you up at all, 'cause it's a direct feed into, into the computer over here.
Wow. Okay.
I, I have a question. One of the points of looking into the streaming that was brought up, because the, the county was going to redo their sound system, camera system, whatever it was, at the courthouse, and, um, it's always been kind of a question. I know it's been brought up several times on this Council. We meet over there, and we're televised one week, we meet over here, and we're not televised another week, and, you know, are, are we really doing the public a good service by not, even though they're put online later, by not allowing them to see that? So, I'm assuming that the, the reason we're looking at streaming is that would actually save us money. We can have all our meetings here, we could stream it, and that would save us money, correct?
Uh, that probably would. Now, one of the th- issues I think that we'd run into is this room is very small. In fact, uh, some of the staff didn't come in this room, because just a few people from Mount Holly. In fact, uh, some of the staff didn't come in this room, because just a few people from Mount Holly, a few of the kids from Mount Holly came over here, and it just blew us out of the room. If you have any kind of public hearings with, with rezonings and things like that, we would have to have the space at the courthouse. Uh, they also have excellent security at the courthouse, so even though, you're right, it would be cheaper to get away from the broadcast and stream. And the other problem with the broadcast is if you're on Time Warner, or you're, there are certain folks, you're, but if you're not, then you don't get it anyway. Uh, so streaming allows anybody that has a, a computer access to be able to get it. So there, we, we also could go to the conference center, cause we own the conference center, you know. But again, we would have to deal with the security issues, but, but again, that, we can do that. But there are some options. What we're doing, w- we did not pay, uh, we did not agree to help the county in their, in, in their upgrade. So they're upgrading it, and so we could, if we wanted to, do all streaming at both, both places, I suppose, right, Todd?
If we, you, are you talking about streaming at the county?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're kinda, we would have to, uh.
Work with them.
Work with them, they're, they are looking into a streaming option for sure with part of their upgrade, but they don't have it in place yet. If we were to go somewhere like the conference center, we could definitely stream from over there.
If it were to be the size of the room, I think I would worry about if we didn't have the capacity.
Right, well, I just think it's something we need to, to think about. Todd brought up a good option that, if we're not speaking in directly into our mic, the pub, we need to look at, you know, options. Are we gonna continue meetings here and at the courthouse? Are we gonna look for a new venue? If, if we're not gonna look for a new venue, do we upgrade our audio here? I think these are all very good questions that should go along with the whole option to stream.
Absolutely.
Is, is my point, I guess, so.
Okay, uh, Mr. Kemp?
Uh, to your point, Councilman Pierceall, that, Todd, that may be something that we could start to kick around when we have our retreat. Are some rough numbers that would, uh, you know, kinda make us move one way or the other, uh, number one. And number two, uh, and again, correct me if I'm wrong on this, no one with DISH could watch the television, it, the way it's televised, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's, see, a lot of people, Todd, to your point, are going to DISH, and they're precluded actually from all of these types of things locally, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Gallagher?
Majority of the people I speak to usually see it on Time Warner.
Right.
And they don't catch it the day of, they usually catch it when it's rebroadcast. And it's just so convenient for them, and they're older, I know my folks would never stream, that'd be, that'd be, I mean, they go on the computer and stuff, streaming, uh-uh. Um, and I just think that if we go strictly with streaming, I would like to do both at the county courthouse, if we could. Um, but to go strictly streaming rather than, you know, doing Time Warner, I think that would just pre, you know, preclude us from, you know, certain segment of the population not being able to view our, um, meetings. So I wanna be, have more open access, and streaming's doing that, and thanks a lot, Todd, for setting that up.
Yeah, yeah, true.
Uh, actually, I think I, I, I got one more. Uh, also, we did get the full submission for the YMCA on, on Robinwood Road with the details of what they're proposing. Uh, that will be, is being evaluated by the staff of public hearing, I think, planning commission in January. So that's a rather significant rezoning, uh, there, it's a conditional, uh, use because of, of the specifics that they're putting there. But it's, uh, that's gonna be a, a significant development for the city. Uh, and I believe that, I believe that's all I ha- oh, wait, no, one more thing, too. Uh, Travis, do we have that brochure?
No, sir, I do not have that.
Okay, well then let me talk about that brochure. Uh, our police chief, uh, actually, uh, just, I think it was the first week he was police chief, we talked about wanting to create a, a publication, a brochure, about what do you do when you're stopped by the police? He talked to his son, his son wasn't sure what he was supposed to do either. So one of the things that we're, what we've done is we've created, uh, a, a little pamphlet right now, and we're gonna be working with groups about, well, well, when a, when you're pulled over by the police, what should you do? You know, where should your hands be, should you roll the window down, what are you supposed to do? And, uh, so we'll get you a, send you a copy of, of what that is. But it's, uh, i- it's, it's part of the effort that we're gonna do to be proactive in terms of communication with, with our neighborhoods. And making sure that we have very good community policing efforts here in Gastonia, and be proactive in, in this, in this area. So we'll send you what that, that, that brochure is, and from time to time, we'll be creating other elements. But I thought that's a good first step to try to, to tell people really what they should do, uh, when, when police pull you.
Does, does the brochure include or discuss tailgating, you know?
That's, that's not in there, I've, I've read it, tailgating's not in there.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gallagher.
Can, can we have it where it's, uh, brought into the high schools? Cause mainly the teenagers are the ones that it would probably be beneficial for.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because one of the things that the chief has talked about is he's already talked to the driver's ed folks. The driver's ed folks are gonna use that in their, in their, in their teaching, so.
Mm-hmm, and I, in a meeting, Chief, Brendan, you saw it as well, we, we got to see the brochure, and it's a very nice brochure, uh, very good for them. And Sergeant Capistran and Captain Aldridge said they are gonna be working with the community resource officers to, uh, hand those out at like the community watch meetings and so forth. So I, it's a great program, I mean, kudos to the, the police department for taking initiative to do that, and they've really thought outside of the box how to get it out to the people that need it most, so, you know, congratulations to them.
Good. Thank you, Ron. Uh, Councilman Gallagher, to, to your point, I believe they are going to be, the plan is to have them distributed during driver's education training, number one. And number two, um, they're also going to be bilingual. Uh, so that will help, uh, a number of the, um, folks that operate motor vehicles that are more comfortable in their native dialect, that they, they will be able to understand all those things, uh, both in English and in Spanish. I'm, I'm finished, man.
Okay, uh, City Council, reports, Miss Craig.
Uh, no report.
No report.
Pierceall?
Uh, just a couple of things, uh, one, um, this past Sunday, I attended the toy run. Gerald, Mr. Gerald Tate, uh, he's to be congratulated, perfect weather for motorcycle ride, and let me tell you, they came out. Uh, you can go on Facebook and see some pictures I've posted, but literally at Irwin Center, the police had to block off Davidson, and the cars came in, went all the way, filled the one parking lot, the secondary parking lot, all the way up. I mean, there was, even the parking lot up by the pool was just packed with bikes, so I, I don't even know where to begin to estimate on that, but wonderful turnout for that.
How many toys?
Wouldn't even know where to begin to guess, uh, I wasn't there for the end, I was there at the beginning, um, but I, I asked him, I said, is this your biggest turnout? And he said, no, but I, I, I think it was probably close to, if not his biggest turnout, cause it was just packed, but it was great, great to see it. I mean, every kind of bike you could think of was there, and it, it was good to see them all come together. Um, also, I did wanna touch on the, the meeting that, uh, we did have with the downtown merchants. Uh, Ed Moon was there, uh, Jason was there, Rachel Bagley was there. Uh, really good conversations we had, uh, there were, I think, only four merchants represented, if I'm thinking right, who was with who. There were only four merchants represented, uh, that is not to say the other merchants weren't interested, this was a small group that is trying to establish a merchants association. So this was the core group that, that's working, and they wanted to kind of, um, get some advice and clarification on some things. They had some, some questions about zoning and ordinances, and, you know, they didn't want to get all the merchants together and ask the city to do this, or, you know, to do A or B if A and B wasn't allowed by state statute or something. So this meeting was more organizational and, uh, kinda clarification gave us some things to think about as a city. Um, I will go ahead and say that, uh, the invitation has been extended to that same group, we have a central city revitalization and housing committee meeting this coming Wednesday at three thirty. Uh, nothing really on the agenda, so we thought we'd go ahead and have the meeting and open it up to this group and other merchants, so that we could continue that conversation somewhat, since that meeting is already advertised and as many could come as want to. So if, if any of y'all would like to, to be a part of that conversation, please feel free to, but overall, I thought very good conversation, I don't know if you wanted to add any specifics?
Well, you know, some of the conversation talked about the building owners. And so we're gonna need to have also a meeting with the building owners, and I think then we wanna have a meeting with the building owners and merchants together. Uh, because, uh, a lot of what we can do downtown has everything to do with what the building owners wanna do. And how we can work with those building owners to turn these vacant buildings into buildings that are occupied. So it's a, yeah, a great first step, uh, but there's gonna be a number of other steps that we're gonna have to take. Uh, and I think also, uh, it's funny, I just got a call today from Pat Johnson, and, and I, I, I think the KGB group is motivated to, uh, to form a subcommittee, uh, to try to help also downtown. They wanna try to lend their support and ideas to, to try to also dovetail on, on what everybody else is trying to do downtown.
That'd be great, and, and since you brought up KGB, uh, I will continue. Um, I would like for us, uh, you were talking about the, the kinda strategic planning, that kinda thing, and I want to make sure that in next year, that we provide, whether it be line item, or just say you're allowed to have this much money. I wanna make sure that KGB has enough money to buy a new Christmas tree for the pavilion, for the tree lighting. That's, that is a nice ceremony, uh, the mayor, uh, Councilwoman Craig and I were there, um, huge turnout. I, one, the biggest one, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Curlin, I'm, how could I forget, you're standing right beside me with the glowing red nose.
He was singing.
It was battery operated.
He, yeah, um, but one of the hu- biggest turnouts I've seen, and probably that was weather related, cause it was a beautiful, beautiful evening. Um, but I've heard so many comments when people say, that's just the most pitiful tree. And, and I know Pat Johnson and that whole KGB crew worked so hard, uh, to, to do such a nice job, and it's something for the community, and. It's, yeah, it's our, it's the Gastonia Charlie Brown City Christmas Tree, so. And, and Pat said those, those trees, those outdoor trees that are built right to, to, uh, have an extended life like that are very expensive. But I want to make sure that, I mean, that, that's a source of pride for the city, and that, that tree's not much to be proud of, I'm just gonna be honest with you, it's not much to be proud of. So we, we need to, if we're gonna say that's the official tree for the city, the official tree lighting ceremony, we need to have a good tree. Todd, one thought would be was, we could lower the roof on the Rotary Pavilion, because I think we built it too big. So, now, another thought would be before, and, and, you know, I don't know, but, you know, Ash County is the largest producer of Christmas trees in, in North Carolina. And I just really, you know, wonder, and I think they've placed seven Christmas trees in the White House over the years. Um, I have no idea what a big Christmas tree from Ash County costs, but. Maybe do a live one each year? Yeah, you know.
That, that's an idea, because.
I mean, I would throw it into the mix, I would throw it into the mix when you're talking about, you know, what is this gonna cost? You know, and extrapolate that, I mean, you know, we got a tree up there this past weekend for twenty-five bucks, you know, and it was a seven, eight-foot tree, you know. So, um, there are trees up there that get so big that they can't sell them. I wonder if they would donate one. We've got my mind spinning now, cause what if we got a live one that could be replanted?
Yeah, has a.
And then you put a little plaque somewhere in the city each time you plant one, saying this was the Christmas tree from two thousand fourteen, this was Christmas tree, and you just place them, anyway, that could be a whole. Sounds like lots of, lots of ideas. Lots of ideas, but I, I did wanna bring that up, because in this year's budget, I wanna make sure that KGB has enough for their Christmas tree. Um, the only other thing I had was, um, I brought up at the last meeting, the, the net project that was on Scruggs Street. Do we have an update on that yet? I don't want that just, just to fall to the wayside again.
I know, I believe Larry was.
Larry's still on email on that.
Larry has.
Today.
Has that almost put together, cause, and, and that, that should be, I think, yeah, should be end of this week, and I.
Cause I, I know I went down Scruggs today intentionally to look, and one of the projects that's on that sheet, nothing's been done on it, so. I mean, that, that doesn't send a good message to the residents that we show up in force and say, hey, we're here to help, this is what we're gonna do, and a year later, it hasn't been touched. I'm not saying everything's been done like that, but I, I wanna see that followed up, and that's all I have, thank you.
Yeah.
Two things, one, Porter, thank you very much, Councilman, um, gave me a picture, uh, this past Sunday, my daughter's picture in the paper for her wedding. My wife finally got it, no, we got it in there, and she's beautiful, uh, with her husband, and it was nice Thanksgiving, we were able to spend with them up in Jersey. Um, the other thing is, we've, downtown looks beautiful. I, I have to hand it to whoever put up the Christmas decorations, it looks real festive, it looks beautiful, just driving down it today, it was just really, really nice. Um, were we able to get any cost at all to see if we could put something, you know, together as, you know, coming in on Cox Road there for the gateway for the holiday season? Or is it gonna take, you know, might take a little longer, but I was just curious.
The cell, the silhouette snow, snowflake LED lighting, five hundred and five dollars each, thirty-three percent discount, uh, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars each would be, for seventy-five of them, twenty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. And then the cost of the bows are seventy-six dollars, well, actually, the, with the discount, it's, it's fifty bucks, so there's about fifteen hundred dollars worth of bows that are current, currently needed. And so we've lost some more because every year with weather, or sometimes they just get moved. And, uh, wreaths, uh, in terms of trying to buy, uh, wreaths are, uh, about five hundred dollars apiece, that's about twenty-four hundred dollars worth of needs there. So we can add, we can, and the banners, uh, we've got some prices on that, so we can put all of this along with the tree, and look at what we're talking about in terms of a budget. Now, some of this is replacement for here, and then some, you can imagine, then if you just start to double these things, and put them at Cox Road, and if you're gonna do it at Cox Road, will we, should we also do something out in West Gastonia? And how much money do you wanna spend? We can start to put all that together for you, as make that part of what you look at in, in January.
Didn't realize how expensive it was, all, all that out there, that's, that's costly, didn't realize that.
Yeah, I can go ahead and tell you, I went and spent twenty-five thousand dollars to decorate Cox Road. There's enough big box merchants out there that can decorate Cox Road.
Good thought.
It's a great thought.
You don't know till you ask.
Yeah.
I, I don't have a specific report, but I've got a, a couple, you know, things that I've been thinking about and have been throwing around in, in some different areas. One was in terms of the, uh, the tree lighting, uh, there's been some conversations through KGB and all, as to maybe expand this into like a German Christmas market. And if you're familiar with the Christmas markets in Germany, you know, they're held during the whole season. Um, and this would, you know, expand that, that evening, uh, into the evening a little bit more, and have some vendors who would, uh, you know, do crafts and things like that. And so that would be one, you know, possibility. And, and the other idea that I thought, I won't be able to make the, the central city meeting, but what I wanted to offer was, um, and we've done this some in the past, you know, where we've tried to decorate the store windows in the vacant stores downtown. And there's an opportunity there that hopefully could be explored with the, uh, the, the building owners, um, where you could participate, um, with art classes, uh, at the high schools. And with their permission, actually paint those windows to look like bookstores and boutiques and, you know, various types of vibrant businesses. You know, window dress them up, so you can imagine the possibilities, you know, even the old Harold Jones property, we've done that with way back when.
Yeah, the term window dressing is, is really, you know, you, where you can dress something up, there are some towns that'll have like a, or like a, a hanger, like a clothes hanger, and sit, and a, and like a dress on it, and say, this could be a dress shop. And then something else, this could be, you know, or, or, yeah, you, you can, there's many things that you could do, and you gotta work with the owners.
Right.
And you gotta keep them clean, too, you'll see that we've had some downtown, and then they start to yellow and just start to fold, you know, the, Shield Museum can bring something.
Mr. Butler, you know, has projected that artwork, you know, up on the, the side of the park there, and those kinds of, um, printed art materials are becoming less and less expensive. And so, um, you can, you can wrap, I mean, basically, you could wrap these buildings almost, um, you know. And that might be something, again, for this planning session in terms of, do we wanna, you know, apportion some dollars for. You know, and that might be something again for this planning session in terms of, do we wanna, you know, apportion some dollars for those kinds of efforts?
The, this group already brought that up, and they're actually wanting to take it a step further, not only just to, to dress up the windows. And obviously that, the city would support that and, and, and help however we can. But that's gonna have to be a conversation between the group wanting to do it and the, the actual property owner. But that was discussed heavily, and then they wanna take it a step further where they're going to seek donations. And actually do some dressing up of the building itself, some, some cosmetic painting, maybe some brick and mortar repair. You know, things like that. They're actually willing to put in the, the, the man, manpower and some of the finances. If the, the building owners themselves won't do it, they said, we'll chip in and get it done. So they're willing to take it a step further. And I wanted to say, I love your, your German market idea. And something I, I, I wanted to get all the groups involved is I would, I think it would be really great. And that would be another thing, is if you started the day off with the Christmas parade, you ended the day with the tree lighting and a market. I, I'd love to see KGB and the JCs and I'll get together, maybe come up with one date where all that could be done. You spend the whole day downtown Gastonia in a Christmas festival atmosphere. Be fantastic. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay. The only other thing I had was if we had any update on Nathan Kirby's project.
Nathan and I have actually had, he called, I called him, he called me. And so he's on my, on my list to call. But he has, he called Ash, I believe, and said that he did get his financing. And so he, this was three weeks ago, I think.
Yeah.
Two, two, three.
Remember, it was like five o'clock on, on Friday, and I answered the phone. And he's, was calling to tell Ed that he had gotten his financing.
But, and, and we, and we're pleased to hear that. Although there's, there's not as much activity there as we would've thought by now. Because I think when we were talking before, he needed to get all of this done by the end of this year for the tax credits. And so clearly that's, that's not going to take place. So I, 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 I don't have a good schedule for you in terms of what his current projection is to finish that. And it does present a problem for us because this city council supported that. And one of the things I think we all thought in the back of our mind was this would be done by now. And we would then, and then the buildings next to it would be occupied, there would begin to, this, this thing is starting to move. And because it's under construction and just demolition, spent money on demolition and the permit. But because he kinda got stuck there a little bit with, with, with his financing, it's got us stuck. Because getting these buildings, a key building like the Lawyer's Building, and that's why the city participated the way it did. Getting that project unstuck, restructured or whatever, that's so important with the momentum of downtown. So I don't, I don't have an up-to-date schedule. He kinda, with that phone call, we kind of anticipated that there would be something coming soon, but I don't have it. I'll try to get something soon.
Yeah, that was November seventh.
November seventh.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to, just kinda dovetail a little bit on what Councilman Pierceall and Dr. Curlin said. My wife and I were fortunate to spend Thanksgiving in Las Vegas. We went to a, a place called Opportunity Village, and it's a, a little village where development, developmentally handicapped adults actually have jobs. And it's, it's in a downtown area, and they foster independence through in the community. But what they do is they have a Christmas village, and it goes a little bit to what you had said, Dave. But what they do, there's a four, five foot tree, and every tree is sponsored by a particular business. And they decorate and light and put up their own ornaments. And there's probably over a hundred trees. And you kinda work your way through this pathway, and you get to see, you know, like a little bit about every business and, and or what their wishes are for the holiday season, their employees, how they lit it, what they do. And it was, it was really, really nice. I'd never been into anything like that before, so that could maybe fit in a little bit downtown. And that's completely done by the business. They buy their, their tree, they put it up, they decorate it, and then they, they plug it into this huge, you know, extension thing. But it was great. Second thing, last night, we were fortunate to go to the Speedway Children's Charities. They had Bo and Luke Duke from The Dukes of Hazzard sing Christmas, which I know it doesn't sound like that really goes together, but they did a good job. And they gave out over two million dollars to children's charities throughout the country. And a great evening. And, and lastly, at the end of the last meeting, I gave out the little pamphlet from COG on the career headlight. And what can be offered through their organization to match up. Mayor Protem, Craig and I had a discussion about it, about trying to help folks determine what they're qualified for. And to get, instead of a lot of disappointment and rejection, to kinda shift folks to what they're really qualified for right now. Or if you wanna change your level of employment, what you need to do to get there. And so if anybody needs any more of them, please let me know, and I'll contact COG, and I can get as many of those little cards as I want. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. I think it's witching hour, we all ready to go. Ed, I, I wanted to ask you, I have three things quickly, and I won't go over the, the schedule. And we'll get into this later, I just wonder if there was, you, since you brought it up, is there any thought given? When you mentioned the, the Y coming up with their, you said their, their plan. Is, I was just curious to know if, if, if they've had any kind of ideas about West Gastonia. I, I mean, are they, did that come up in any conversations that maybe you and Jason or anyone had?
Earlier, when they were first talking about moving to Robinwood Road. And I think Brenda, you were in those meetings. We, we wanted to see if there was that interest to stay. In fact, we, I mean, of course, I mean, I think the city would prefer to have them stay in the heart of the city and, and have the expansion here downtown. But they were pretty driven at that time, and I think now with their supplemental of their plan, you know, they're, they're planning to do this on Robinwood Road. Now, the only thing that Tony Sigmund said to us, well, if the city gets involved with a downtown baseball park or something like that, that that property that the Y owns might be provided to the city. And also that maybe there's a small urban Y kind of thing that could be put into that complex, may, maybe. And that they also said that they would work with the Boys and Girls Club in some fashion, but not. Brenda, I don't know if you. But not, yeah.
Okay, so, thank you. And that's good, that makes sense. Secondly, just for information purposes, Ms. Gastonia, nineteen seventy-six resigned as Commerce Secretary of the State of North Carolina this afternoon to go back home to Rutherford County to, well, to her home for a media group, some, they're, they're opening there. So we, and somebody's already replaced her, so, but it was good why it lasted, I guess, that we had a Gastonia girl there. Thirdly, and you just brought it up, I guess this might be a point of personal privilege, and then we'll go. I have been questioned pretty diligently about a fence. A fence that's, that's down near the boys, as you just said, the Boys and Girls, the Optimus Park. I don't know anything about it, so therefore I couldn't answer any questions. I'm not necessarily supposed to know anything about it, and it's not a thing yet I've heard about it that I like. What is this about? And, and how much money are we talking about, the taxpayer's money?
This is the Vance Street project. And the Vance Street project, Phase One, as you all remember, is the, is the little park area. And, and then Phase Two is the one we just dedicated.
This is the Optimus, I'm just talking about the Optimus Park.
Yeah, Optimus Park.
Yeah, yeah, the same.
And, and so the, as, as you face the park in the first phase. The city put up a railing, a vertical railing fence to keep the children really from going into the street. And kinda defining where that park is. On the north side of the property, there's a residence on Vance, and there's an existing chain link fence there. And what the city did is we put plantings along there. And as that grows in, you'll have the plantings and their existing chain link fence. On the other side, the south side, and as, is, is that church facility, that, that kinda yellow or tan church facility. The city put in plantings again and have those plantings grow together as, as a buffer. The property owner of, of that church had expressed or had requested that we continue the fence that we have on the front and turn it and go down along that property line. Their concern that they had were that, that people from the park would be just walking down church property. And they wanted to, to keep the children in the park and the adults with the children. And not have them go back onto the church property. So the cost to do that would be about five thousand dollars, I think it's forty-nine hundred, but depends upon how it actually works. It's about five thousand dollars to turn that vertical. That's the attractive looking fence that you see on Franklin Boulevard by the Rotary Garden. But not, not the brick pillars, but that would be about five thousand dollars. So the city has not put that in, but the city is, has, that request has been made to the city.
Well, I, I just, lots of questions. And I'll try to break this. Forget what the building looks like, forget how big it is, forget who owns it, forget any, forget any of that. It's been my experience forever that if somebody has something that is not good, they think to their property. They put a fence up, and, and certainly not the other side. I, I think that, and, and my next question is a real simple one. Did the city put up cameras to see if people were walking through there, and not, over two months' time, not one person walked across there?
I think, in fact, I believe that that was our plan. Is Chuck here?
Is the police department had, had a special request to go check it, and they've still not seen any children.
Yeah. Now, flip, okay, here.
I'll be glad to address it. We did put up some cameras for security reasons, but we do not sit there and monitor them. Nor have we had somebody go back and review the tapes. That's very time consuming, but we do have cameras there.
Thank you. Might just be something we don't know, okay. Well, I, I don't know about the, about the, the council, but I, I just, that's setting the precedent that I don't, I don't understand. I mean, I would think, my first impression was that we may have added to the value of that property somewhat. Because it's so neat looking, and it is so nice looking.
Oh, I think we definitely.
With the amphitheater and Brenda Craig amphitheater and all that, I, I think that it's, that's adds to, that, 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 that's a metal building. And it's empty, or was, so I don't know if the church meets there or not. Certainly won't help the church, but, but I don't, I don't, I just really, it's your call. And, and that's what you, 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 that's your job. But I, I don't, I have a real problem with, if somebody has a problem, they can put it on their property, just like a residence can, and just like they do. But now you're saying it's a decorative fence, I, I just was told it was just, you know, like a fence. But I also was told it was not big enough to hold, keep people from going and walking around it, so therefore it serves no purpose.
Oh, it, it would be easy for anybody to just walk onto the church's property straight off the sidewalk. I mean, but what, what this, and if you look at our parks, sometimes we have fences and sometimes we don't. It depends upon the use. You know, if you have ball fields and things like that, well, of course you have fences. If you're getting close to roads, you put fences there too. Sometimes you're doing it to define a space. So there, you know, but a lot of times we don't put fences at all, we use vegetation, cuz it makes it attractive. In, in fact, the way that it was designed initially was there's a vegetated buffer that will grow up over the years. That, that will serve as, as a break. But now, if anybody wants to, you can go from the church property to the park, or the park to the church property. On the other side, you have the, 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 the single family residence, and I think it's like a four foot chain link fence, or maybe it's five, you know. So someone would have to hop the fence there. But of course, you can walk right outside, right down to the sidewalk and right into the parking lot of the church, or, sure, and, you know. Then there's, now then, if you go back into the property, there is weeds and, and, and undergrowth. And I don't think folks are, nobody's really walking back through there, so it wouldn't go all the way back to the creek, it would just back to the, where the undergrowth.
Well, the first impression was probably not a good one that I had was how much, when I heard it was five thousand dollars, I said, taxpayer money. How, how many, I would just wonder, and I don't have the answer to this question, may, maybe y'all do, is how many the police cameras were that by, that I've, that Greensboro is a hundred percent full? Are they giving every police officer that you hook right here or somewhere on the, and I don't know how much those are, but I'm just, gosh, I could take that money. And, but to put a fence up around, I, I was very surprised, and I couldn't say anything. I said, I'll find out. I brought it up here because I think it's serious enough. I don't wanna set a precedent. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I think it's serious as well, Your Honor, and I looked at it when we had that, the wonderful grand opening. And I'll be candid, I, I am a proponent of the fence, and I'll tell you why. I think that when you have young children, specifically in a playground, park type setting. I think that it's, it's good to have the property lines delineated. And I think that does that without being overly zealous as far as the fencing. So I, I think that when you have a playground type setting, that it does serve a purpose, number one. Number two, to the point, and I don't know where this is gonna go yet, but I recently got a document, latest this afternoon. I know that President Obama is going to be, prospectively, making some grant monies available for body cameras. I believe the number right now that's been put out there is, through the Justice Department, is seventy-five million. Now, I don't know where our, you know, our qualifications, this is just a blanket number. And it's, my understanding is that there will be assistance for law enforcement agencies that want to either go to body cameras or explore a certain number of them. So I think down the road, you're probably not gonna have to shoulder the whole expense or the training. There's also gonna be some training documents that are gonna be promulgated by the Justice Department on how they're used, how, how the information's retained, et cetera. So I, I think that's gonna be coming out.
Well, I would, and I don't mean to drag this on, I appreciate that, that's good, that's interesting. That I would respectfully disagree with you on your first thing you said, Limeburger Park doesn't have a fence around it, neither does Phillips as far as Chestnut and even the Busy Gares and Boulevard, and there are the Swings and all that. So that's just not an example of what you're referring to. Yes, ma'am?
This was approved months ago, okay. And in fact, Mr. McIntyre. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Oh, Porter.
Porter, okay, came to me and said that he had had a request from someone about putting a fence up there. Okay, and then would, would that be something that, that could come out of the park money? And I said, I didn't think that that would be appropriate to put a fence up on somebody else's property with public money that was raised for the park. So I said, no, and, and let's see if we can't do cameras. Which that was in agreement with Mr. Philbeck to do cameras for sixty days, okay? And I, I don't, I didn't know anything about the results of the camera, other than I had understood that there were, they did not find any of our children on their property. So then, everything kinda went along okay, and then not too long ago, then there was another conversation about the fence. And Mr. Munn and I had that conversation. And I, I said, you know, I disagree with it, okay, but. But, here again, it's your call, but we can't use Optimus-funded money. That if it's gonna be put up, it would have to be taxpayers' money. So, that was the conversation that was had, and the last I heard was the fence was gonna go up, and it was gonna attach to the existing fence and go all the way down to the, to the brush, to the woods, but it would not be connected. Now, we did, before we built the park, we did have problems with, I don't know if they were homeless people, but we had camps down there in those woods, and the police were real good about getting, getting that taken care of. But, you know, the playground, and, and, well, I don't disagree with you as far as children and everything, and that was one reason why we put the fence up to start with. But, because a lot of our parks don't have fences. But, the playground, and that was one reason why the first drawing of Phase 1, the playground, was beside that building. And Chuck was the one that made the decision, or helped make the decision, to change the playground and put it up on the top part so that it wouldn't be so close to that facility and wouldn't be that close to, to Garrison Boulevard. But, that's how I think the fence thing came up, is that we could not or would not use Optimus-raised money to put in a $5,000 fence. If we're gonna do that, we're gonna put it in the park, we're gonna take that $5,000 and put, do some more amenities in the park some way. So, that's, that's how all that came about, or what it's worth.
Yes.
Just one question. Is this fence going on city property or the church's property?
The, it, if the city puts a fence, city puts it on city property. About six inches over on our side, anytime we put a fence anyplace, you know, that's, you know, we don't put our city fences on.
Okay, well, this was, and, and second of all, why did the city agree to put up cameras if we had no intention of reviewing the film?
As, as I recall...
That just seems really stupid.
The cameras, then when I, as I recall our, our earlier conversations, were first put there because we wanted to deter adverse, well, actually, adverse activity around there for the protection of the children. And we were talking about, well, can, you know, how, how much operationally, because we wanted to make sure it was safe. Back when we were doing the first phase, all that woods back there, you know, you couldn't see through. Now, the way it was done, I mean, you can, you can see how it's, it's, it's not a hiding place, like what we were concerned about when we first started designing it. But the cameras, really, on this park and other parks, and in our downtown, can be more and more prevalent. That's how you see what's going on, that's how sometimes you catch bad guys. So, we're, we're, we will use cameras in our parks, Greenways, and in downtown, as we have the money to do so. But part of the problem Flip was mentioning, and police do, is, yeah, who's seeing all this stuff? Because about the only thing you do is if something happens, then you go, and you ta, you have to take a look at it.
Okay, I get that, but, the, the last part of mine was, I agree with the mayor that you were certainly setting a precedence when you get, because, am I not mistaken, when this project first started, didn't they offer to sell that property, but it was like, way too much money?
Yes, they asked $80,000 for it.
For that little piece of property. So, they were already wanting tons of money for the property, since they didn't find a buyer, they're staying there, and now they're saying a park is interfering with their property, which the park only raised the property value. Can we not just put another chain-link fence? I, I mean, $5,000 for a decorative fence, because somebody said somebody trespassed on their property? I don't know, that, that seems a little crazy to me too, but...
This is a little different than a fence. There is a big drainage thing by, there's a gully there, and there's a big corrugated thing that you could actually walk into. Sorry, Dave. Natalia and I like to throw my hands around, we speak with our hands. Can we put some type of fencing up there so the kids aren't going into there? Because if I was a little kid, 10, 12 years old, and I saw a big opening like that, we're going in. And if there's a flash flood or something like that, and they get caught in there, just...
Take a look at that.
You know what I'm talking?
Certainly, yeah, we, it, we're areas where we have utilities, we don't want them to be an attractive nuisance, but, yeah.
No, actually, there's, there's, there's something made for that, Dave.
Councilman Weed, we would agree, from a safety perspective, we have those culverts all over the city. The problem is, as soon as you put up a fence or some type of bars or anything, then they become trash collectors. When it does rain and flood, then all the trash will build up against that and block the entrance or the exit to the culvert, and then we have flooding issues. But that's why you don't see those type barriers in front of those big culverts.
And this is a big culvert?
It's the one on Garrison, is that the one you're referring to?
The one at the, the, the park itself?
Right.
Oh, the...
Yeah. So, there's no way we could put some like, type of grading up just halfway?
Well, it, it, you can, but it, it just becomes a, a...
See, I'm trying to deter the kids from going in.
... barrier from, from the water from going through.
You, you're talking about the culvert where the driveway, the driveway is?
Where we walk over?
The walkway.
The, the new one.
The new one. Yeah, not, not the one on Garrison.
Yeah. And then, again, yes, you can, but it, it is a high maintenance, anytime the leaves fall, any type of trash that gets against that barrier, then it just backs up and keeps the water from going through.
We'll take, we'll take, we'll monitor it and take a look and see what's going on.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Todd, to...
I'll record over here.
To speak to your issue, generally, and Travis Craig, or Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, your, your, your cameras are more, unfortunately, given the number of personnel that would have to watch all the cameras, they're more reactive than proactive. In other words, something happens, and then you go to the videotape after something's been reported. We don't have, again, you're trying to correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think that we have the personnel to be, and I'm not sure that's the most productive use of our personnel, to just be watching a whole bunch of, of cameras. And, and where, on the other side of, of the, the equation, as you pointed out, Councilman Gallagher, and also from the, the side fencing or what, what you're indicating with the drainage, that's more of a proactive issue, and that's what we have to decide, we wanna be proactive or reactive. And, and that's, that's where we are at the end of the day. To speak to your point, Mr. Mayor, you know, we live in different times today, and there's no doubt that, I, I, when I was growing up, you know, unfortunately, kids' parks didn't have fences. But, you know, things are just different in our world today, and I don't have an answer for it, but you see it more and more, how, you know, why can't a child go out trick-or-treating without their folks or being driven house to house? I, I don't have an answer for that either, but I, I, I think it comes down to being proactive versus reactive. And, I don't know, I don't know whether we're better off or not in our society, but I think in some ways, that's where we've gone. So, that's my perspective.
I totally agree with what you just said. The only, in this particular instance, is, it's not protecting the children, it's one property owner, because he can't get his price, says, put up a fence, I don't want people on my property.
And, and, Your Honor, what all, just a sec, I'm not talking about...
Whoever it could be yours or mine, I don't care.
I'm not talking about the property owner. I'm going at it specifically from the perspective of, don't wanna see somebody lurking around that building and luring a child off to that side. It's, there's a, there's a blind spot there, there's a, you know, you gotta drop off there, and it has, and I'm telling you straight up, has nothing to do with the property owner, how much he wanted, what he got. I think more and more, we gotta think about our, our per, our physical security and our personal security. And I say this again with a heavy heart, and unfortunately, that we have to do stuff like this, and that's where I'm coming from. Had nothing to do with the property owner, the price, or I don't even know what, what the price was, but that's my perspective.
But then again, I did mention that others, it's been here for many, long, 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 long time.
You're right, you're right. And that's my point exactly. Back in those days, unfortunately, we didn't need, we didn't need fences, you know? And it's just gone that way in, in a whole bunch of different things in our society, and it's, it's unfortunate. It's where my, what my perspective is.
Well, I think that the bottom line, and I'll adjourn the meeting, I, I totally disagree. If it were his property, his property, or mine, I, I would disagree with putting a, a fence along those, at that line there. I, I just, unless it was already in the original plan, and it undoubtedly was not, so, I, I definitely plan to check to see if those cameras were, somebody had, somebody's looked at it, so I'll find out, and I'll report back to you. Okay, any other comments or questions? Thank everyone, and I guess we have one more meeting this, this year, right? There's 16.
Absolutely. Wear your, wear your Christmas tie or your scarf.
I've got one.
It's dirty, but I've got one.
Dave, your dau, your daughter ought to know all the details about where we're all, you're all supposed to be, right?
Oh, don't forget your...
Isn't she the, the grand poobah?
She's the, uh, she's president of the act, and she's not, uh...
The chairman of the...
She's not a parade chair either, so, but she's, you know, on the board, so she'll find out.
Now, more importantly, are you, how do you trim your beard?
Little.
Trimmer?
Yeah, little, yeah.
Set it to a...
Scissors are too, yeah.
You set it to a number, and then...
Yeah, set it to a number, and then just go in the right direction and hope for the best.
Yeah.